Now, I'd like to call the Adams County Board of Supervising Leaders. Mr. Borden, uh, Mr. Pratt, would you give us a prayer?
Senator, Senator, my his. Father, we thank you this morning, God, for allowing us to see another day. And, Father, we just carefully give your name all honor, praise and glory. Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you continue to strengthen our elected officials, God. Father, continue to give them strength from high. Father, continue to keep them close together as they make decisions for your people, God. Father, we just want to send a special prayer to the Pharaoh family this morning, God. Father, we just thank, continue to confide them, oh, God, on their bereavement, oh, God. And, Father, just anybody in that is Adams County, that may have lost loved ones over the weekend, oh, God. And, Father, we just want to continue to pray for strength, uh, in this city, in this county, in this state, and in this country, oh, God. Father, just let you be in the midst. Father, we continue to pray for all our county employees, our first responders, our school teachers, our doctors and our nurses, oh, God. Father, continue to put a head protection around them. And, Father, we just carefully give your name all honor, praise and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I will type the prayers.
Our first allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I get a motion to approve one of April minutes. Been properly moved by Supervisor, uh, Wilson and proper second. By Supervisor, uh, Gray, uh, and then it's a rec. All right. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, vote by using sign of "I." And opposed, ladies have the same right, motion carries. Now, I need a motion for the approval of the documents. Been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'm just, I just have a concern about the energy bill over at the National Guard Army. Because I haven't been seeing nobody over there for I don't know how long. We got a six hundred and almost seven hundred dollar bill over there. So, maybe somebody need to go over there and check and see what's going on.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Now, is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by using sign of "I." And opposed, ladies have the same right. I get, uh, approval for the Adams County Sheriff, fathers. Been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Proper second by Supervisor Gray. Are there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." And opposed, ladies have the same right, motion carries or not. Now, I need approval for the transfer of purse report. Second, if it's properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Proper second by Supervisor Gray. Are there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." And opposed, ladies have the same right. Now, I need approval for the monthly financial report for purchasing. I get a motion. Been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Proper second by Supervisor Gray. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." And opposed, ladies have the same right. All right. Are there any special presentations? No special presentation? If there be no special presentation, we'll move on to county business insurance update. Mr. Fred Parker? Fred Parker not here? I will move right on that to Mr. Jimmy Ray, Recreation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess we're here because of Recreation, because the city we want to take over. But, let me give the warnings on the board and update before we, um, move in the court. Now, I can see if the county want to take over instead of the city. When we had the pool brought here, we had the Y M C A. This board paid the Y M C A a hundred thousand dollars just to be here. The city did participate. We paid the director fifty-two thousand dollar plus benefits. The city did not participate. We built the soccer field, y'all gave two hundred thousand dollars. This city did not participate. When the Y left, the bills were so bad, I had to come down here to Joe Murray. Me and him had to go to the electric people's to give because they wanted five thousand dollars just to cut the electric back on. This city would not participate. The grass has been cut down there ever since we've been there. The city do not participate to get all the other stuff turned on. And now, when we got to this point, um, I think our last board meeting, we had a full court, it was like November. Because of the debacle, the alcohol, the goo, they throw two of the, two of the minutes that they put on there under the bus. So, they asked for a public apology. I sent you all the texts, a couple of the texts that she sent out. The city would not apologize to them, so they got off. So, basically, they ran people off, so we couldn't get up before. We only had, and then, at that time, last time we had November, we didn't do anything because we didn't have any bills. All the bills are directly down coming to the county. The water bill, electric bill, telephone bill. And, uh, only thing that we have to do then was insurance, you know? We didn't have any insurance. I turned it over to Scott because he was asking about an update of, uh, concessions at the pool. And we had never done that before, so I didn't know what to do, so I turned it over to Scott. But, when we got down to January, we needed to come together because now we got the pool we're going to open next month, which we got certification for recertification and certification of lifeguards, which we have now. And I want to bring it to the point, we had sororities donating lifeguard, me lifeguarding for swim lessons. We had churches donating kids a swim lesson. We had business donating, we had hospitals donating. When we first took over, uh, first when the pool got here, we didn't have any black kids that actually swim with money to. We had a pool of about thirty or forty kids. All of them had to have on life jackets because nobody could pass the swim test. We had now got to the point where they can make two or three laps, and that was the goal. Now, at this year, we told the target so many kids and go back so far to actually get blacks up and swimming. As of right now, A C C got a, got a swim team. Cathedral got a swim team. Public school did not have a swim team. We finally got kids that can make two or three laps without stopping. Because each week I go over there, I challenge them to go a little further, a little further, a little further. All of this is now going on. Even Ricky Gray, Mr. Gray, Supervisor, when the Y was there, everybody had on a life jacket. He comes to me and say, kids cannot learn how to swim with a life jacket on. So, once we took it off, we had them pull the life jackets off. If your parents were there and you wanted to swim, and they was going to teach you swim lessons, you got a ceremony when you let them do it. Now, we got kids that can swim all over the pool. We had so much official, official last year. Couple days, we had to cut kids off from coming because we had, they said a hundred and five capacity. But, once we got to about eighty, eighty-five, we just couldn't control it. So, you know, every time we got to that point, we just cut it off. So, this board has done everything it's supposed to have done. We walked from day one all the way to there. We have not had any problem. As of right now, the city complaining, but what are they complaining about? I'm asking the question, what are they complaining about? We have done, everything we've done is to make this better. And each year we have gotten better. Even the sheriff, uh, the sheriff come over each year and have so many kids come in. When we needed the pool cleaned, I went to the city, came to the county. The sheriff sent us four inmates over to help us clean the pool. I was in my pocket, paid the lunch for them. The grass need cutting one time because we needed a soccer event. I took my lawn mower and cut the grass. Because the county had cut it, but it got up so high, and I went to Johnny, he said it was doing something else. So, I took my mower. We do everything we can. Back when we had February nine, when we had empty camp, we was trying to do laps. Swimming was from six A M. to eight A M. Swimming lessons were going from eight A M. to noon. And then we had regular swimming done. So, I had to go in from Monday, Wednesday and Friday from six thirty to eight, just to let laps run in. The city have not participated in no kind of way. So, before y'all take y'all vote, consider all of this.
Um, well. Any, any discussion, anybody have any comment?
Well, um, one thing he didn't, he did, wasn't correct was the city tried to just pull it off, and the only way the county, I was with the city, the only way the county was going to participate is if they brought the Y on. That's the only way the county decided they wanted to participate. They wanted the Y M C A to be a part of the swimming pool. Now, now, what I'm looking at is, Scott, maybe you can help me. We have an agreement in place?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The problem that I see is, Mr. Ware, do, do, you say, how many people on board now?
Right now, right now, my last two from this board got off in February. City took that off in November, December, because the city did not apologize. We only have five, six, so there's very little room without, I'm going to call Mr. Batiste's name. He works out of town. Anytime we had a board meeting, if he was going, I wasn't going to be in town, I could call him. And then we would put him on speakerphone so he could help. Right now, the city, the people started their resignation to the city in November. The city know they was short. They choose not to put somebody back on. They push this moment.
Here, here go, here go where the problem is. We got an interlocal agreement with the city. And the interlocal agreement says what, Scott?
Uh, we have a joint commission, and that commission, uh, approves expenditures. They present a budget. They hire a director, and, uh, costs are split between the city and the county.
Okay. Here, here go where I'm going. We got two choices. Either we can take our time and figure out where we want to go with the commission, with the interlocal agreement that we have in place, or what is the other choice?
The other choice is with the, I said, the other choice is you have to get with the city and amend the agreement if you don't like the way the agreement is.
Well, only thing I'm saying, what I don't want to have, is us to rush into any kind of agreement without just getting everybody at the table like President Gaines always say. I think everybody need to be at the table and discuss this because, uh, we done been here, we done, we done had the director with the city over the pool before. And only, it is a negative, you know, is a positive. The positive is the director can run everything. The negative is if that director lose, uh, get, decide to leave, then we right back where we was when we started. So, we need to figure out a win-win for the swimming pool. What is a win-win for the swimming pool? And, and I don't think we going to be able to figure that out today without getting everybody involved at the table. That's just my opinion.
One question on that, me and Ms. Hutchinson, when she was close, and we tried to do that on numerous occasions. The city just didn't want to come. And I, I keep pointing the finger at the city, but the city didn't want to come to the board and talk about it. We, we tried to work with them everywhere we can. You know, the pool is, it's doing what it's supposed to do. And if we going to continue, and I see what Mr. Gray going, but Mr. Gray, we are on a time. And I got, um, Belon and my schedule to come in the second week in May for swim lessons and, not swim lessons, but certification, recertification. We cannot run the pool without lifeguards.
I understand it, Mr. Ware, but we under an interlocal agreement, and right now, it is out of order. Because it, it, we not doing what we, the interlocal agreement is telling us to do. So, either we going to get rid of the interlocal agreement or do whatever. We got to do something because we under an interlocal agreement.
I understand it, and, um, I, I just want to know which, when I came to you in February, I presented this problem to you then, and I told you it was too short, and what did y'all want me to do? Did you want me to go ahead and set up? Uh, right now, she's waiting on a decision, so, uh, I'll just go ahead and set everything up and then let it run like a running until y'all make a decision. I'm going to come on in.
President Gaines, Mr. Gaines. I agree with Supervisor Gray, and, and you know, like I always said, you know, when I was too, that we need to bring everybody to the board and let everybody speak so they can have, you know, everybody know what everybody is saying. But, at this time, we cannot move forward. All we got to do is, what, you keep doing what you're doing, because like you said, we under this interlocal agreement. And we hadn't come to the table, so we still under this interlocal agreement, so everything stays the same. So, you got to keep moving forward with what you're doing. Um, there was a director, and there was an assistant to that director. So, what probably needs to happen is you need to get someone else to help with that director in case, uh, something happens, as Supervisor Gray said. Because I know that directors at this time are going to need help anyway.
Right now, they will be over, over starting, but you know, we open on Thursday, the fourth of August. So, we got basically, what, three weeks to do the planning process.
So, I think you're then go sign.
Uh, Supervisor Wilson. Okay, President Gaines and I sat in a meeting, uh, last week with the mayor and a couple of, uh, Alderman, Valencia Hall and Sarah Carter Smith. Um, the city does have a rec commissioner, uh, a director, and, um, they're going to use her to help run the pool. Um, that, that's the plan anyway. Um, she's done a really good job. I don't know if people been noticing the city parks and what have you, but she's, she's been really good at that. And, uh, I think it'd be one of those things we have to, uh, fight all the time. They, they have a director already in place, and she's going to get certification almost immediately. They're going to keep the personnel that you already have, but we can't keep, seem to keep a board together. Uh, the county has, how many directors, one?
Thirty.
No, how many? Active, one. City has zero. So, um, they seem like they would be more capable of taking this over and running with it. Um, um, I'm sure you still going to be part of it. I mean, you're, I'm sure you're not going to just.
Well, I would have no reason to go over that, too. Look, I don't want to step on nobody toes if they going to run it because, you know, the kids going to come in it because I got them now trying to compete.
That's why I said. And you, you don't even get paid, do you?
I don't get paid nothing.
I wouldn't think you would abandon them, uh, just because somebody else is going to take over the, the pool. Well, I wouldn't think. I don't know if you know the lady is going to be trying to run it or not, if we go that route or, or not.
Never mind, but I, you know, it's about the kids, it's about the children.
Yeah, exactly. And, uh, they just have, seem to have a pretty good plan in place to, to run this pool. We haven't been doing anything really but paying bills. Uh, and, uh, can't seem to keep anybody on board. But, that's just, uh, my take on it. Uh, President Gray, you might, might have another take.
And I, I just, you know, in the meeting, you, you know, what I, I spoke, you know, my piece, what I always leave in the meeting, and I don't have a problem, my whole priority is the pool. But, everybody here know, I believe in bringing everybody to the table at one time and make a decision. However the decision go, we going to have to deal with it. But, I like all of our partners to be at the table. And that was, you know, my, they, they have a plan in place, they put stuff in place. But, uh, as I said, uh, at the meeting that day still, you know, I see that they got a plan in place. But, if it's going to be taken over, everybody need to be at the table. We can do one meeting and get it out the way, and then we going to have to live with whatever going on with it. I believe in everybody sitting at the table at one time. And that way, you will know where we stand, the board know where we standing, the city know we can move forward.
But, that is the same plan that we've been working out the whole time.
Yes.
They put out there, that is exactly what we're doing. We have, we have a shortcut, nobody anywhere.
Yeah, I understand. I just want everybody to be at the table, but when we make a decision, it's, it's easy. We put it at the table one time, and everybody be there one time, and we can move forward. Supervisor Miller, you have a thing to say?
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with a lot of what most people have said here, even Mr. Ware. And, uh, this has been a topic of conversation for, for our entire time. And, uh, we got to schedule that meeting ASAP.
ASAP.
And get it, get it, uh, get it figured out. You know, there, I do have a concern about the ability to keep a board or commission in place. It's been a struggle from day one. You know, they get on, they realize they dealing with a lot of headaches and arguing and fighting, and, and they don't get compensated for it. So, it's not very desirable.
But, it was put in place.
So, I think we need to set that meeting up.
ASAP.
Get it talked out, figure it out, and take a step forward and be done.
It was put in place to keep the politics out of here, and since, since then, you all have been this political, so that's a problem like that.
I will.
You got some tug of war between the county and the city, I mean, the city and me.
What I'm going to do is, uh, we'll get, um, our secretary, call it a meeting, find out if we have a meeting as quick as possible, that everybody sit at the table, uh, including you. We're going, and we're going to make a decision, and we're going to move forward, we're going to move on. Because we want the pool to continue to go on, but it helps the kids come in town for swimming. And I think the pool is an asset to the city and the county, and I think we need to keep it operating. But, I want everybody here at the table when we make the decision. And I think that's only fair to all participating parties, including you.
Let me say yes.
Supervisor, thank you.
Because it's something I have to say. I'm always sometimes getting in trouble, but it's something I have to say.
Yes, ma'am.
We did not have this problem. We had commissioners, and there was no problem with commissioners. When newly elected officials got elected and wanted control of the pool, this is where these problems came in. Hold in, we didn't have no problems. We're keeping commissioners and all that, that pool ran smooth. But, it's when other people came in and wanted to get control. And that's where the problems started.
Didn't that one mean he, Robert?
No, this is coming from a source. One last thing. Scott was coming to our meeting. We had no problem with our meeting. He would come, he was in a jacket, everybody was showing up during our job. It's when the new, and like you said, elected officials on the other side. You only got one person on that board that was there when this was put together, when that civil council. Everybody else on there is me. And that's the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. We're going to call it a meeting, and we're going to get it hashed out with everybody at the table, and we're going to move forward.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gray. Yes, you can.
Scott, this is you at the meeting. Did they, uh, do anything with the I L A, or they just adopted this? I'm talking about the city. Did they do away with the I L A, then adopted this, or they just adopted this?
They made the proposal that they changed the I L A for this. They can't just do a way, do away with the I L A. I happened to be there, and I told them, you can't, you have to have both the city and county to agree to change the I L A. That's why you do the I L A, and it binds both parties, and that way, it's, both parties have to agrees to, to change it. If both parties agree, what's in place.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Ware. Are we taking care of that right now? Uh, next is all the way.
You want to form with the Alderman supervisors?
Well, it right, that's it. We want to go forward a little bit.
I assume that, but I didn't want to.
Yeah.
This week.
This week. Excuse me, yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, first of all, I have two different situations going on here. And, uh, Mr. You Supervisor, you see I supervise it, Father?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I asked you four years ago, five now, if you like to say, to bring me a handful of the dirt. And it has not been done. And the reason why I keep pushing because there's a hole in my yard by the light post in the front. And my brother-in-law knows that area well. And he said it used to be our sister, and it's gotten deep. So, if anybody go up in there, I do know. I'm asking you how unfortunate it is. And then, they was bringing dirt down past my home. And I stopped one of the drivers, and asked him, will he, because I had talked to him. And I said, you can get in touch with him. He left, and I ain't said nothing, and I did nothing. But, must remember, I paid three hundred and eight dollars a year taxes, and I'm tax exempt for five years. So, it look like all they want is my money. And then, I, I believe in paying my way, but I also believe in getting results because I'm somebody too. I'm somebody too. Now, uh, of course, if I was speaker, uh, when I was speaker last meeting, uh, I, I, it has not been rectified. So, have you all decided what you was going to do? Because I will not pay. I know who had the guys to leave my trash, sitting on the driveway. I saw the truck coming, come off the top of the drive, and I was coming, coming. Need to help. I'm done, I'm going to keep that wood clean. And they left my trash, and that's what I said when I was here before, that was my, my complaint. And nothing has been done for us to be here because every, every money comes out with that metal in there. And, uh, I had talked to the sanitation department first. I always go side to the bottom, go through the top. That's where you do things, so. So, nothing has been done, and that's why I had you all. So, it still had not been done, the beer has not been done, nothing to, but I will not pay. But, I don't appreciate it, and then I own the beer when it come after me, because that's not over.
Yes, ma'am. Well, let me, let me address the dirt issue first. I, I, I've been here three years, and I know when it comes to dirt. I think we can do it, but the supervisor in the old system, supervisor ran a D system. In the newer system, if there's a system or something like that, it ran through the road department. And if you have a system in the yard that need to be filled, we can get with the road department, and we are approve it, and I think we can fill systems.
We know like Brian Rivers here or something like that.
And, and, and fill that in the yard with that. Uh, we can do that, so that somehow, I don't know, uh, if something with that hole in there, we miss it. If we miss it, I try it to my head, not to my heart, because I promise you, it's just something that I remember in the trash. But, the system part of it, I don't.
But, I didn't say system because.
System, the hole, I'm saying the hole, but in the bag in the yard, whatever. But, the trash is on, I did not realize that they was, you saying last time, and we figured it out, so they leaving only your trash.
Only mine, and did twice. But, I know who did. And then, I'm the one, is I always be out there, even when the guy come for the pick up litter, I'm out there, yeah. Come on. I don't have to do that. That's where I was brought up.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I don't care, I don't mind, what truly me say.
What was your address, Miss?
I'm on three, Tasha.
Three?
Number three, yes, Tasha.
Supervisor Gaines.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Will, um, you said you would ask, uh, them to bring you some spore dirt.
Is, is that a request, a spore dirt request? Is that something different?
No, she got it. This is what I heard, too.
Okay.
But, she's got a system.
Well, you don't think of spore dirt, you know, system.
Oh, this is a system.
It's a system.
No, if you don't put a river here, he won't come back, he won't get it filled. Dirt, you know, put dirt here, but we put that seal where to go through and get in and fill it up. This is the first I heard about a system. And we will come, look, I wrote the address down, so.
But, I learned you put a system after I had you. Come along, I know the system.
Now, since this is, since this is a unit system, you directed department, road department had in there. You asked what we can get.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Let me say this. Robert, are we buying dirt?
Yes.
So, we don't have our own dirt pit no more, right?
No, we don't.
So, Ms. Will, the, the way we usually deal with a hole, we usually put spore dirt in a hole, and you have to go through the road department and fill out some paperwork.
I did that. I did that.
For fall, but that's not.
But, in your situation, you don't need spore dirt in a system. You need whatever he say you need.
That's right.
Spore dirt ain't going to work.
I, I would do it. I use that spore, I don't know if that would affect the parents. What's wrong with being honest? That's how you learn. Send it to your mother.
Spore dirt has leaves and stuff in it where we clean ditches out.
You don't need that, not to y'all. You don't need that.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I'm going to take care.
We going to get on today.
I got it, Robert.
And, and, and I'm going to figure out why, uh, all the people in the neighborhood, they just give your house, no pickup your trash. And I don't understand.
Happened twice.
It happened twice, and I don't understand that.
I do.
And it been out, and was the trash out?
It, it was out me, in my little white bag.
Mr. President, when that happens, you contact the sanitation department, they contact Metro, and it's a missed pickup, and there was out there on time.
It was not a missed, excuse me, I'm sorry.
President, that's the, that's the procedure.
Okay, this is, okay.
Yes, I'm going to.
Well, anyway, I did, just what he said. I said, I said, I know all, and anything I do, because I, because I, I learned it. I do, because I, because I, I, I learned it, I studied, but anyway, moving on, uh, uh, now it's time for violations, I had that, that problem, uh, why was my plaque changed at the courthouse on my property?
Again, the tax assessor will try to look at those plaques, and try to look at, if you're talking about a tax map, they're trying to get accurate plaques, that would be a question for the tax assessor's office to get to those plaques, but we can certainly ask them if there's any changes of your plaque, if it was a plaque changed in the deed records, that would take a private person that came and filed something, so that isn't, we don't have any, by law, the clerk, if third party, party files something, the clerk has to take it, file it, they don't have discretion in that, in that regard, so it's either, if it's a tax map you're talking about, that'd be a question we can ask the tax assessor, is charged with trying to maintain accurate tax maps, A, or not something you can rely on, as I've kind of tell many constituents, it's, is kind of just a good guess for the tax assessor to make his decisions as to the value of your property, it's not something that landowners can rely on, comes down to your line of disputes at all, so, if it's a tax map, we can ask the tax assessor if there's any changes, if it's a chancery clerk, I can already tell you, because somebody came in and filed it, and they have to receive it, file it, does it mean you own anything, or change anything, it just is what it is.
Well, and this is what you not use for these, because I've been there, I, I started this in twenty thirteen, way before twenty thirteen, if you search this, but they didn't turn my money down, over eleven hundred dollars a year, over eleven hundred dollars a year, come on, that's what I pay, and if there was a problem with my property, and I go by the state, the green state says there, from day one, and I can see where you dug the bank off, I can see, and then I had, I witnessed that over, he was tired of it, that he come to me and said, I saw them, I saw them digging the bank, I knew they dug the bank, and then now it's inconclusive, so I was told, why was, why was, I'm the owner of that, thank God, why wasn't I respected enough for someone to come to me and talk about, they should just make a decision on their own, that's no excuse, that's no excuse at all, what you just said, because they would, trust me, that mobile home will move, it will move, and I mean it from my heart, because I know what I know, I'm not stupid, and if somebody try to make me stupid, this people.
Mispronounced.
It is, and, and then not only that, uh, I have been harassed, I have on my calendar so many days, so many days, I have been harassed.
By who?
By the sheriff department, they told a leader, I can't erase my white hole.
So?
They, they told the leader in my, uh, on D seven eight, and I was coming home, and I banged my finger on that, and said, stop me out, because the leader put these little wild arrows out there, and nobody home, and then they had no to come to the back door, and I say, huh, open that door, why you back here, I got two front doors, and two back doors, and then, yes.
I don't mean no harm, but, uh, the board of supervisors don't have, I know, an elected official, the sheriff is elected official, and he handling his business, we, we can't handle business dealing with the chancery clerk, the, the tax assessor, those are elected officials.
Okay.
And you gotta deal with those elected officials, you, you, we can't chastise them, that, we don't do that.
All due respect to you, I, I say my scheme, I do things in order, I been there, I left church, I left church some before last, and I was in that much fighting, I went there, they threw the door, you know, it's like, we don't care, so, where do you go, and everybody who I ask to wait up the stair, I don't know, I don't know, this is not my freedom, not a wonder, and I respect what you're saying.
I can tell you, if, if I was you.
Okay.
And somebody did something to my body, and I think it was out of order, then I would hire me somebody to protect me and look after me.
But guess what, the, the attorneys are not evading, and I respect them, they're not evading.
I'm just telling you.
I was saying, yeah, because they have a, they have a red flag somewhere, and you know what, we can say, yeah, look now, eat everyone too, it's okay.
Don't you have cameras at your house?
I have what?
Do you have cameras?
Hey.
I, I'm gonna imagine is, if you got cameras, you ought to have a camera doing whatever they did to you.
But, but that's something, you say I have to have one?
You wanna know, I'm asking a question.
Yeah, but then, you know what, my eyes are on camera, and, and no disrespect, I'm saying, I'm a witness here, they did this, but then, but when you cannot, but when they have, and I don't think I'm trying to be cute, not funny, I'm serious, because if you cannot, if, if somebody show me they don't wanna be bothered, I'm gonna find you some room, if you need, I'm gonna find some extra room, and I am, because I'm vague, I just don't vague, you can't even get an attorney, because of the red flag that I believe is on me, but you forgot to put it on, God, you forgot, so, 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 since I'm taking up your time for nothing, because I have been, I have been all the way from A to Z, and know it's up, but I know where else I can go, but that mobile home would not sit on my property, and I mean, I'm paying taxes still, and then you gonna take it, and then the, the person coming in and saying, you don't need it no way, huh? She told you that.
City government, we have any city government? Um, Mr. Uh, Brian Johnson.
Good morning, um, I have a question, the budget amendment.
Did it adjust because of the movement of one of the employees, and then there was also a little bit of overtime she needed to incur to help scan in some warrants, some warrants and whatnot, um, we've got the budget amendment, and seven thousand two hundred ninety dollars and three cents is what it needs, out of that, only four hundred is needed for the rest, because we moved an employee with a, with a higher salary, got me over there. Any approval for that?
Who's, who's?
It's all of them, they all get, uh, five hours?
No, the police didn't take it, they don't too, too.
Well, on your budget request, all of it's.
Yeah, I probably won't take it.
Um, like blowings?
Every one of them have even that time, is that? Any motion?
So long.
Very, um, we're, uh, it's been moved by supervisor Hutchins, and second by supervisor Gray, they have a budget amendment, the amount.
It's on there, seven thousand two hundred nine dollars and three cents, majority of that is because of.
Any, any more discussion? There be more, no, no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a, a, in a poll, may they have the same right, motion care.
Alright.
Departmental reports, next.
Good morning. And I failed with Adams County E now on this page, the reports for the whole month of April, Adams County SO had six of five calls, Natchez PD had nine eighty-three, Natchez Fire Department had thirty-two to twenty-one in the county, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Will, Departmental report, next.
Good morning, my name is Janine Fries, and I'm the purchase clerk for Adams County Board of Supervisors, um, only had one item today, last Friday on April twenty-eighth at ten AM, you did the bid openings for the shared department outfit on ten vehicles, you only had one bid submitted, which was from Kirk Auto. The first five vehicles include, number one, one vehicle, a bar light supervisor package for ram truck, two supervisor trucks, okay, two slick top supervisor units, the total amount for those five vehicles was fifty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, the additional five vehicles had only a bar light patrol package for ram trucks, and that cost was sixty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, the total was one hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Alright, you heard the request of the purchase clerk, can I get a motion?
Is this within their budget, is that?
This is for the bid over.
I, this is, yeah, I know, the, for the packages for the ten vehicles, right?
Yes, the total of the ten vehicles.
How are we gonna, do we know where it's gonna come out of?
That's what I said, is it gonna be a lease purchase?
It's not for the bid, I don't feel it is.
Well, we could probably finance it, I don't know if you type into lease purchase, have we done the, have we done the ten vehicle purchases, has, has that happened yet?
I think they're getting.
We, we, we got the O for the ten vehicle, but they have not been produced yet.
Okay.
I got, I got word, uh, last week, that seven of them are scheduled for production for June, don't know what day of June, but they're just scheduled for production.
That's my answer.
Yes.
Uh, so we use the lease purchase to share vehicles?
Yeah, we're trying to tie everything into the lease purchase, how much is the, okay, if you can send over the information, I'll ask the bank, and I'll get review, and I'll show you how, but I do, how to tie that into the lease purchase.
But the outfit is separate from the vehicle.
I understand that, but we don't have a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar line around, so.
I understand that too.
Alright, well, Ms. Price, uh, if you will give us, get your information to the attorney, and, um, he'll get everything worked out, he'll show you what we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we need.
You can accept this?
I need a motion to accept the bid.
I knew that we accept the bids.
Second.
It's been properly moved by supervisor Gray, properly settled by supervisor Hutchins, that we agreed to accept the bid from, uh, was it Kirk, I don't know where?
Kirk Auto.
Okay, alright, is there be any more discussion?
Make sure you get the advertisement information over the page, that she can include it.
Okay.
If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a, a, in a poll, may they have the same right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Price, uh, do you know where we are with the ordering of the, uh, making out equipment of the structures?
Of the structures, of the parts, yeah.
No, I can all go through that with you. I can throw you on the quick.
I think it's, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, structures, you did, it was, um, it's, I think they had structures, but they was having to, uh, get somebody, looking for the bid for somebody to put them up.
Okay, so they already.
I'm not, I'm not sure, but that's what, that's what, I'm almost sure, but I think that's what, was the problem, is waiting on somebody to put them up, the property put them up.
Put them together.
But we'll find out from this.
Thank you.
Alright, Departmental reports, I'll be back, Ms. Price.
Good morning, board, had three hundred and seventy-seven nine one one requests, two hundred and thirty-three transports, average response time in the city of seven minutes and fifty-seven seconds, ninety-one percent compliance, average response time in the county is thirteen minutes and ten seconds, and that's eighty-eight percent, uh, fifty-one refusals, twenty cancellations prior to arrival, with no patient contact, we, we don't know if those false calls are not, they're not repeated addresses, so it's not something that we tracked before for a repeated dress type situation, uh, thirty-five canceled prior to arrival, uh, a party decided to cancel, and then they also include law enforcement cancels when they get on the scene, uh, eighteen site calls, which is about thirty-eight percent of what we did in the previous months, so that kind of dropped, which is about normal for this time of year, we had six medical flights straight from the field, high level injuries that don't need to go local, so we sent them to the air equipment, and air gun, until level two facility, a hundred and forty-five hours and twenty-nine minutes of wall holds, uh, this is kind of delaying these responses, there were around a hundred and ten responses that were delayed, did not post this unit responding because trucks stuck on the wall, uh, no crew member quarantining, and total requests for the month was thirteen hundred and thirty-one, so that puts the nine one one and prior to calls, thirteen hundred and thirty-one for the month, that's about all I have, unless y'all have questions for me.
Also, thank you, Tim, you're doing a good job.
Thanks, Tim.
We appreciate what you do, Departmental reports, next.
Good morning, board, Special Student Adams County Power and Antenna Process, have one request here today from Verizon, they request a permit to place additional equipment on SBA Communications Power Site located at twelve oh nine Highway sixty-one South, this project will include replacement of nine antennas, six remote radio units and associated equipment, and removal of nine antennas and three remote radio units, these are upgrades, that's what they are, replacement of this additional equipment will improve Verizon's service in South Adams County, along the Highway sixty-one South, Carter and Natchez. Order and requirements have been met and pleased at them, and they, and request the board to approve this Verizon, uh, requirements application.
Alright, you heard the request of Mr. Student, can I get a motion, been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Second.
Been properly settled by supervisor Wilson, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a, a, in a poll, may they have the same right.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning.
Um, I have three employees, it's up under six months raise, uh, and I know, you know, I do it before the board, but I bring it back at the time, late at night, within the day, Chris Allen and Demetrius Clark, they go from thirteen fifty to fourteen dollars an hour, twenty-nine, one twenty, and the next one, uh, is doing late at night, Adrian Davis, he CD other hour, go from thirteen fifty to fourteen fifty, thirty thousand, one sixty, uh.
I do that in paperwork, I had a paperwork in hand, so, uh, if we can, if that's pay rate increase, we'll do it all at one time, I'll give you the papers, uh, it's Christopher Allen, uh, moving to fourteen dollars an hour.
Got it.
Alright, uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins, and properly settled by supervisor Gray, is there any discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of a, a, in a poll, may they have the same right, motion care.
Other thing, I have, uh, the school sent a request over, uh, by cutting ditch along High and Sycophyl, the football stadium, and ran it through about twice a year, they spraying, want to cut it this time, but they do have to send a request, I bring it forward, so, I, uh, do by the game, you should have had the request up there, I put it, so, uh, but I just, you know, um, you don't have to sign nothing, but I just put it up there, she can have a few minutes.
Okay, well, I, I'll find out, see what.
That's fine, I do.
If you're gonna sign it, you do, but.
He don't have to sign it, I seen it put it up there this, because I know she needs a few minutes and things.
And we don't, wouldn't it just tell her I'm gonna do it?
Yeah. Alright, the limp trucks up and running, uh, supervisor Gray, so we will start at sixteen South U Drive, it, uh, we had sent it back to Jackson, so we did, we did get it back last Thursday, so, uh, we're gonna start, I will get a deputy probably tomorrow, if it dry enough to get it down where we need to get it, we will start, uh, removing that, that group from that location, supervisor Gaines, uh, went through Ken Rattler, um, he does have a little more fence up than he did last time, uh, he's slow doing it, but he's got over half of it gone, um, my ride should have been booked, but I'm just gonna give you update when he gets to, he just took the fence up, he's got about half of it, a little of that, Ken Rattler, uh, other than that, asphalt, uh, we have three more roads left on the, uh, asphalt projects we're building, um, they are not working in Adams County for the next three days, is what I got this morning, uh, from Hayden, with APAC, so, that's it, we don't know when he's gonna have asphalt back, we do have three more roads left to do, and then we are getting out striking, and she got what I keep this morning, and put out striking for me for those roads, other than that, that's all I have, if y'all have something. And I say, they do have a street, no tomorrow, I'm going. And I say, they do have a street on tomorrow, I'm going to look at those.
Okay.
If they give them off some, couple more hours.
All right, appreciate it.
President Gaines.
Yes, sir.
Boy, stop.
We're waiting on the last several trips to get here. This would have been a great time, we're gonna have it, but I think we're gonna start any time to put some of it up. Does he not see we're gonna collect the ticket for APAC, so we'll get that this week, to get that put here. I think we're gonna start on maybe over the last several long trips.
And, uh, I know there's been some issues with this paving, uh, as far as documentation, et cetera, and I just want to thank you, Dave, for y'all's attentiveness to this, uh, project. I mean, I think it's gone pretty smooth as a whole, but, uh, thankful for y'all and keep her on track.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Uh, one more.
Yes, have you all, uh, did the, uh, paving right there in front of the, uh, safe room or to the purpose building?
We're not, we're still waiting on the school.
Okay, is there any way that you all can do a follow-up with the school to find out, um, what are they gonna do for us to purchase on that stuff?
Like I said, I mean, we're gonna send an email, but we're gonna send us the email back to, you know, locate Charles the asphalt to the school, but I will follow up on that and get that put here.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, good morning, Board. Uh, just update. Um, Morgantown Road Project, we received comments for phase one. Um, and they also want to give us the documents that we need to prepare in order to quit authorization for them. So, we're gonna take about three weeks to get all this finished down, and copying and packaging done for the quick authorization from them. So, I think the next board meeting, I will be requesting authorization to advertise Campbell and Docks. Um, um, EWP's, uh, we're sure coordinating with the same property owner to try to get his approval of the proposed design and proposed construction for his, for the two sites that are on the property, in order to get the temporary leases, so. Um, he said he'll give something, give back with me today. About how you feel about the, uh, previous, um, project, hostility, that they are getting ready to issue the contract, just until they get the notification that they have received, uh, the cam portion of the, so they just, he said, he told me to check and see if they get it today.
The cam portion of the, uh, striping?
Yeah.
Okay, so, do we need to do anything on that stuff?
No, I, no, I already told you that, uh, commonly get sent over Tuesday, Tuesday.
Okay, nice.
And then, um, the last thing is the state aid project that we talked about in our last board meeting, talking about state aid, if they really want, it'd be a waste of time to submit those projects that are not, that don't have previous projects on them. So, all they gonna do is just send it back and technically just reject the program form. But we can submit for those ones that do have previous projects on them. And it's only, uh, six point two miles of, of road that can be submitted for striping.
What would be on there?
Um, that would be the Littleville Road, one point one mile, Kason Road, one point five miles, and Arden Road, three point six miles.
We need to move forward with that, but you got that.
Yes.
I think we need to move forward there, so.
But we can't say it's gonna be...
We need a motion for that.
Exactly, we looked at, at when we had the road, he said...
Did you say the little one?
Yeah.
It's on the one point one mile of the road.
No, that's right, that's right, that's right.
He said, um, yeah, so we need a motion for that.
All right, I think that's, I think that's gonna be a motion.
We did a motion, yeah.
But now, just to take off the road.
Yeah.
President Gaines, you have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think I asked you on Mr. Dollar, one, did that one point one miles include the section that's been overlaid in this paving project? Because we definitely don't want to double down.
We're checking, see what section it is, we will check and make sure of that, because that's something we gotta advertise, you know.
Right.
Where we're gonna be, where we're gonna get section, but we'll make sure we don't switch that.
Just want to make sure that's not...
Yeah, if it becomes open in that, we need to do it that way.
Thank you.
Um, so I'll do the program form for that, for the show, for the whole second. And then you see it come up with, uh, many of those roads on that state maintenance report that I provided everyone. Um, these roads on those can be, have striping, resurfaces, anything like that, if you want to use up the available state aid.
What, what he's talking about, Warren, is what we had discussed with Chris Dixon that time. He puts out that report every year of state aid, or we make the state aid route right and looking. Anything that he recommends on that list is what he's saying, that we want to move forward to some of those forms to do it. You know, reseal, chip seal, overleg, striping, you know, things like that, is what he wants.
And I think that was a previous issue that we talked about, because on the last time, we talked about asphalt road, it was not included, it wasn't not a state aid that we thought. So, you know, and I'm, I'm gonna speak for me and pretty much all the others, uh, that other supervisors, uh, see, but we, we would like to look at some of the other roads that were on there, because, you know, we, state aid recommended us spend so much money, and I would like for you to, uh, well, I'm gonna ask you, I'm, I'm gonna speak for me and ask the rest of the board, but we would like for you to look at that list and some of those roads, if you would, some of the rides, some of those work roads, would be what we recommend and get some work done, so we'll make sure we maximize them.
Well, I can do it when I'm done and fast with the county, just, I can just take that entirely this and build confidence of some of each road, how much each road costs, and you guys can pick on that list if you all have it done.
Okay, let me get down with that.
And I had it for you to, to bring in four minutes.
All right, and I appreciate it.
And actually, I sent, I sent it before me.
And, uh, question. Phase two of Morgantown Road, is it on schedule to be still open May seventeen?
Yes, sir.
May seventeen, bid over.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Supervisor Gaines, I have one question.
Yes, yes, sir.
Have you heard anything back from the grant?
I haven't read that for M C W.
Right.
No, ma'am, they have not, they still have only around one funding posted on the website. So, I'm still waiting for them to send their notification, you listen notification. Uh, was it not, what, once the, once the funding is available and you go to website and you pick the list and see if there are parties on that list, huh?
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gray.
Um, me and Supervisor, uh, Hutchins attended the, uh, P D D conference. And in that conference, um, there was a regional authority say they had all this money. And, uh, I made a call to, uh, Mr. Ford and Mr. Laird about, see, could we get some money for this drainage issue that I have on, uh, y'all can scroll and look at this on Powell Street. It's a bad drainage issue on Powell Street off, uh, Miracle Drive, all the way down to the end. And they say they had so much money, I just told Mr. Ford, uh, see, can we get some more money to, uh, extend that drainage situation on, uh, Morgantown Road on out. And I don't know whether they can bear to do it, but I, I put it on the tape, because I know at the same time, the mayor was in that meeting, and, uh, he made some calls and they did get some money, but, uh, what is that? The grid, not the grid, going under the hill to stabilize their vaults. They was able to get some of that money, so I tried to see if we get some of that money. I don't know if we gonna get it or not, but he didn't make the call.
All right.
All right, any additional questions, bottom here?
Another question from Mr. Ford. Being honest, uh, questions from Mr. Ford, we appreciate it, and, uh, just follow up on a few other things we did. We appreciate what you've been doing.
I heard we take you all the time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Laird.
All right, uh, I was out of officers in problem, I was outdoors. Sent me this preliminary cost estimate for the area in your, in your district, uh, Warren. We were talking, we've been talking about the C B D grant, potential grant, we've held up there before and all. And the estimate is roughly one point one million dollars. So, the C B D G is based on the point system. So, what we all, we always recommend drainage issues, all ready to dump store, as well as sewer and water. So, we always recommend a fifty-fifty match. So, in order for this to even get in the funding range, scoring wise, you know, you would have to match roughly half of that. So, it'd be, we would ask five hundred thousand for C B D G and then match five hundred thousand. So, before me and George proceed at all of this, I just want to make sure that's something y'all, y'all can discuss it. I can back at the next meeting, but, well, we're gonna do some surveying out there, but it's not something that's feasible.
Yeah.
Let me ask you, let me ask a question, Mr. President.
What?
Uh, is it a timeline?
C B D G?
Before you have to, you say come back at the next meeting, we get a chance to discuss it, what, what is the timeline?
Well, the grants do, it'll be due the next meeting, I'm assuming is the fifteenth? All right, the grant will be due that week, that Friday.
Okay.
So, I mean, in the meantime, I can still do surveys and whatnot, there's lots, that's, it's a lot of work to do.
So, let me ask you another question.
Sure.
Uh, with the information that I sent you with, with, with Powell Street, the D R A, and they got all that money, do you think they got money to, to do that too?
I mean, it'd be the same type of application, and I, it's something we could certainly pursue, and it wouldn't require a fifty percent match, we might even pile it all together, this Adams County drainage, I don't, you know, I, I don't know. So, we might still want to match something, though, I would say at least match a twenty percent or something if it's with D R A.
So, what about this? What if we pile all of that together with D R A while you continue to work on the C B D G? And we come back to the next board meeting, maybe you'll have some good news and say, well, we can get this done all through D R A, we won't need the C B D G. But if you can't get it done through them, then we have to make a decision, you know, whether we gonna match the five hundred thousand dollars or what.
Well, I, I mean, neither, neither grants guarantee.
I know, it's competitive.
So, um...
See, when they get up there at these meetings and talk their nerves and say they got all this money, and, and, and they ain't about applying for it, so, we gonna apply for it and see can we get it, because the city got some.
Yeah.
And they got on the phone right away and called, and they got some for, for the, uh...
For the law. We're, we're actually assisting them with that, so they actually receive the money for that, but not through D R A, we are applying.
Well, one thing I'm saying is, if we apply through D R A and C B D G, if D R A don't work, we won't know before the C B D timeline up.
Right. You'll know, D R A usually notifies you, this, D R A's due in early June, they usually let you know July, August. C B D G, actually the same timeframe, they're due in a couple of weeks. And they'll let us know probably August, July, August, when they start doing site visits for potential projects.
Well, what y'all think, because at the end of the day, we got some money, we got to get rid of it anyway. We got to sign a waiver.
Let's look at the next meeting, continue moving, we'll look at the next meeting for the other thing, we'll see how far we can go with it.
All right.
Any email from survey stuff, I'm gonna be, I, I'll make myself available, I got a few events this week.
Yeah.
But I'll make myself available, we'll, we'll work with time, if you need me to help to kind of go.
Uh, I'm definitely gonna need some assistance with that.
Let it go in the area, because I know the area.
Right. All right, thank y'all.
We got a question.
Yes.
On your home grant, uh, the last home grant that we applied for, they, uh, did approve it.
It was approved, right.
Yeah, where are we for this?
I'm still trying to get the environmental clearance from the City Home Corporation. And I hope I got them the last... I think...
People saying, you know, when are we gonna get it, what's gonna happen? So, I just wanted to...
I'm talking to them too, and I hate it to take so long, but, uh, but we, we, we will have to re-advertise for engineer, surveyors, assess inspectors, when advertised last time, I didn't receive any proposals, so. And legal?
Okay, I think...
I'm trying to explain the hundred thousand dollars that this board, uh, put in to do two houses per district. And what we want to do is use ten thousand. Well, pretty much, we want to do two houses, but some of them is not gonna cause ten, we gonna have some left over and make them do another house. But the thing is, uh, what I'm trying to say is, this is our money, so we not following the SNAP guidelines. We just gonna give y'all the money, we gonna pick the two houses and let y'all do the money part. Do you understand that, Paul?
I did.
Well, it seems like a lot of people down there don't understand what I'm talking about, but when I asked you last time, you understood exactly what I was saying, so can you help? Explain what we trying to do to them down there?
Yeah, sure.
And we need to, uh, I know the net has some death in the family, so we not trying to rush this.
Right.
But, uh, we just want to get an understanding on how we gonna do this. Is that not right?
I mean, I think some of the questions are, is it, is this gonna be totally separate from SNAP? Or, because SNAP, SNAP has guidelines, it doesn't want to have any guidelines, and it's just kind of...
We're not gonna have...
I think we're a little nervous, you know.
The same, we not gonna have the guidelines that SNAP had.
Right.
Uh, maybe I'll need to send you, uh, exactly what they get in, uh, Charleston, South Carolina, because they spent three million and they ain't have no guidelines like that.
Yeah.
The guideline is gonna be low income. Low income, that's the guidelines.
That's it, low income.
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to explain it up there, and, and, and we was gonna run it through y'all, because y'all already have the contractors and y'all already can keep up with what's going on, we can't do that.
All right, y'all talking about it, right?
I'm getting down to you, and we'll get that mentioned about it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank y'all.
All right. Um, yes, sir.
Corporal Moore, I have a kind of share talks. Mark, I have a little report, but I would like to thank everybody for coming out and supporting the road.
All right.
The little report, District One, thirty-one bags, District Two, forty-eight bags, District Three, zero, District Four, seven, District Five, nine. That's all I got.
You all must not be picking up in District Three.
Yeah.
You all must not be picking up in District Three, Zeeba, all that trash out.
I don't know, that's just what I gave you this morning.
Mr. Park?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to give a brief report on the open enrollment. Uh, since we don't have a mandatory open enrollment, every year, there's a few issues. Uh, one, this, this year, there's one company that comes in and they have a table, and they piled televisions and ice chests and all this stuff on there, said, you know, if you buy from us, you get a ticket, then you might win one of these. Well, a few of the employees went and bought our products, and then they said, we come back for the draw, and a person said, well, if we had to sell fifteen products, or we don't get the draw. So, uh, that, you know, some of these companies are just, I don't know, predatory, I would call them. Uh, and at some point, and I, I, I've said this several times, I would like to move to where we have a mandatory, uh, open enrollment, where everybody has to come by and, and sign. I know what, the way we do it now is for expediency and to, uh, so employees do not, and that's a lot of work. Uh, but, okay, that's, that's that. Another issue I'd like to bring up, and I have, oh, Angela, an apology for this. About a year, more than a year ago, uh, she needed, uh, and, or she mentioned an employee that needed a past smear, but it was denied by Blue Cross. The reason that happened, Blue Cross goes by guidelines developed by the American Medical Association, Blue Cross, and any other insurance company just doesn't come up with their rules just out of the air. They go by guidelines developed, saying, well, if you do this steps too frequently, uh, for instance, something that involves X-rays that can cause cancer, we think the risk of developing cancer from the X-ray is greater than the possibility we might catch a disease. At any rate, uh, at some point, I think the board might want to consider, uh, that on, uh, past smears that we look at putting in, in the contract, that if a doctor thinks that a female needs a past smear and it's not within that three-year guideline, like it's the very next year, that they... that they get allowed to get that past smear and that be paid for. Uh, and I, Angela, I, I guess I'm watching this old head of mine, and, uh, this weekend, I remembered that conversation we had, and I said, I wanted to, to address it this morning. And, uh, and us maybe look at that, if we could talk about it today, or I could get some more concrete information and, and be at the next meeting, uh, perhaps. No, I can't, I'll be in, uh, at my son's graduation in Oregon. But that's something we need to address too. And I'll, if the board wishes, I'll get some more concrete information to present, but that's something I think that should be considered. Uh, one last note, we, uh, I do need, at the end of the meeting, if I could meet with the board for like five minutes on, uh, on an issue that would require the mention of a person's name.
Exactly, essentially.
Exactly, yes, thanks.
Alright.
That's all I got.
Alright. Public comments? Any public comment? Alright, uh, we'll come to the table. Mr. Gray?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, his brandy, uh, he checking our budget. Have, here about, the problem is, we don't have any budget.
I would hope so, they're supposed to be watching it, you know, periodically, if not daily, and especially if they're making requests for purchases, they're supposed to double check that before. Um, and purchasing has been on top of that, and you stay on top of them. If they're not having money in their budget, they're making a purchase, they, they told them to go back and request a budget amendment, so. We're trying, trying to track that that way as well.
Okay, thank you, um. I see that they did have the, uh, renaming of the State Club in under the, uh, uh, former Senator, the late, uh, Bob Eric, how many they didn't make it, because I just didn't make it. But that was an awesome deal by Adams County. And, excuse me, um, I need to get approval to travel
I ask the community to be patient on the ones that have been paid, but they're not through. There's a lot of cleanup work still to do, but they did a really good job paving the roads. You know, things are looking a lot better around here, and I'm very pleased with it. And I think most other people are too, but that's all I've got.
That's very crazy.
I don't have anything.
Uh, can't clear brand new.
Have a piece of this stack of papers quickly. We need to have the May bond renewed spread across the minutes for Corvette McNeil, Dee Davis, Jabeen Johnson, Mary Kay Dory, and Robert Pratt, please.
You heard the request of the change of clerk. It's been properly moved by supervisor Miller. Proper second by supervisor Wilson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried, unanimous.
As the board is aware, we now have a new policy in place which was established by the legislature about permitting. And so I was speaking with Scott about this. Do we need to have two separate receipt funds or just one set up for that one? Since we have the construction, the boring, or can we do a minimum of one, you think?
Yeah, we could.
So we just need to have board approval, just so we can track the receipt of these permits. Any new funds that are created, of course, have to be, as y'all know, approved by the board, so we just need board approval to establish a new receipt fund for the permanent fund to receive.
Then properly moved by supervisor Hudson and properly seconded by supervisor Gray to establish a new fund for permitting. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried, unanimous.
Need to have the mail tracking report for Adams County Sheriff's Office from March of 2023 spread across the minutes.
You heard the question of the change of clerk, taking a motion. Been properly moved by supervisor Wilson, taken a second, properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins. Would that be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried, unanimous.
We have two budget amendments. One is for the road department, is just moving money within their own budget. We need to have $2,500 moved from 150,309.12 to 150,304.75. And also have a budget amendment for the juvenile detention center. We are moving $1,000 from 001,163,581 to 001,163,550, again, all within their same budget.
You heard the request of the change of clerk has been properly moved by supervisor Wilson and properly seconded by supervisor Gray. All in favor vote by, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried, unanimous.
Okay. Need to have spread across the minutes, we received a change order request on SAP 0156. Um, JK, us is not here today, are they?
What is that for?
Um, it's showing that it's an increase. Uh, asphalt. Doesn't have a list on here, just has a, I don't know what even. 3,341 and 10 cents, it looks like.
Is that gonna be for the, uh, progress down below progress road right there, uh?
Majorca?
At Majorca right there, what, I think they were talking about it when Mr. Martin was here, they would need to put some asphalt in that driveway for that contractor.
Oh, we did that last week.
Yeah.
We just got this in the mail, though. But that's a change a lot of air.
Mr. President. Yes, sir.
No, it was four, yeah.
This is a new change order?
Mr. President.
It's dated 21st.
I'm, uh, wait for a few minutes and give Robbie a time to go call Hayden and ask him what is this all about before we make a motion to approve it, before we know we will bring it back and we address it then.
Okay. Um, I had a request for myself to attend the change of clerk conference, which is going to be in Baystate Lewis, Mississippi from May the 22nd through May the 26th.
You heard the question of the change of clerk has been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by supervisor Gray. Would that be in a discussion? All in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right.
Also, this is not a travel request, but there is a registration fee. Ms. Brenda Blanton, who is the Human Resources Director, has asked to attend an online conference. The registration fee is $149, and it does require work really, even though she's not traveling, who wears these signatures.
You heard the request of, uh, the change of clerk, taking a motion. Been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by supervisor Gray. Would that be in a discussion? All in favor vote by using the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, may he have the same right.
Just, we have two, um, fund amounts. One is being held at the Circuit Clerk's in the Treasury of the Circuit Clerk's office. The other one is in the previous tax collector's account. Um, just gonna, they basically, the letters state the same thing, I'll just state that and then give you the two amounts. There are funds remaining in the previous tax collector's account after diligent search and inquiry by the county, as well as our third party auditor. The funds remain unidentifiable pursuant to 27105371 of the Mississippi Code. The funds can now be issued over to the general fund. These amounts are 187,048.42 and 797,568.24.
Excuse me, could you repeat that again?
We'll play them out.
Uh, 187,048.42, and then the other one is 795,568.24. And do we need to do a new fund for those, Scott, as well?
First, approve the fine.
You heard the request of the change of clerk, taking a motion. It's been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by supervisor Wilson. Uh, would there be any discussion?
Yes, sir. And, and, go ahead.
Is that the supervisor, correct? Okay.
No.
He said, he did. Uh, my only discussion, where you say the money came from?
I unidentified the funds from tax collection accounts. One of them was from tax collector Peter Byrne. The other one is from, uh, Jack Rose Patterson's funds. Uh, it's been a few years since we've had them. Um, the auditors couldn't identify for them, so the county auditors made that declaration that they're unidentified, and so we're following the statute under this.
So this money is in, what, in the bank somewhere? Where, where, where was the money?
Uh, one of them is in the tax collection account, fifth and last four digits, 4740. And the other one is in the Circuit Clerk in an interpleter action. Uh, we're asking, after this letter's gonna be adopted, we're gonna ask the court to release those funds pursuant to the statute.
Thank you.
All in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right.
And we also need approval to establish a fund to, uh, for receipt of these, these money.
Ask the board to create a general fund account, 009, so that if the entities come and call, try to call back, that we have that money there and just kind of let it, let lie for now.
You heard, uh, can I get a, uh, motion?
So move that we create an account, oh, oh, man.
Sorry. And then probably move by supervisor Gray and properly seconded by supervisor Wilson. Any discussion?
I mean, it's still be able to flex with it in case we need it, but this would be an interesting.
I'm assuming it's gonna be interest bearing account.
Yeah.
And, uh, no more discussion. If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right.
Did Robbie step out?
Yes.
Okay, well, this, I was just gonna ask him if he was able to get in touch with Mr. Barry on that St. Catherine Creep Utility Authority, so that we need to have someone appointed for that, but I'll wait till Robbie comes back, and then I have an item to determine.
Seems like I talked to him about that, and he said, that guy said, you know.
So that's why I didn't get response.
Yeah, he didn't respond to you, he didn't like the personal response, he.
Okay.
But that's just what, uh, that's secondhand information, but I think it's accurate.
That's all I think.
All right, uh, attorneys, cast your vote.
I have to put that forward in the act of previous motion we had.
Okay.
I need a motion to adopt a letter of support for any grant that the court is making. Um, I'm asking that board approve it.
You heard the request, uh, I mean, uh, has that property moved by, uh, supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by supervisor Gray? Uh, any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of aye. Any opposed, may he have the same right.
Uh, previous meeting, we sent around an updating of our agreements policy for your comments. I have a copy of it, if y'all wanted to look at it again. Um, if the board ready to take action on it, certainly can. If not, I can bring it up at the next board meeting, or we can bring it later.
We've already seen, yeah, we've been arguing.
I'll move that we adopt it.
Oh, let it go to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we can defer that.
If you're at the end, he could look at, go ahead and move for his own copy.
You just one, one copy?
No, everybody should got.
Everyone should, yeah, it's that long, but it's, should be two pages.
He's mailed two or seven, it's been mailed already.
Yeah.
Okay, see, is this never? Was this not approved?
It was not, so we, you know, whatever we come back with the other one, we include the rest in, yes.
So this one, I don't know if it ever received, uh, this update on travel, so I'm gonna pass it around to y'all as well. Probably will need to wait on this until next meeting, so I'm gonna take it very late to adopt it, but it's a travel policy, and it talks about, it's just better clarification and better tracks the statute of what we're allowed to do when it comes to travel. So just trying to get, tighten those things up. Your name is okay? And I agree, yes, that would be what my suggestion, you should go ahead and do it.
They were asking a question about Mr. Barry a while ago, if you had contacted him.
I did.
Mr. Barry, and I told him that you had made contact.
I was not.
Six, seven, four yards, four, six, four yards. State bar, camp around, yeah, so camp around. That's what it took to pick it up. The report, yeah, state bar, they, they, they. That's a waist tire.
Yeah, this waist tire, Rich. Only needs me to see it.
Just gets approved, then you can go sign the original at the office. He's wondering, that is.
We need to.
Sure, yes, thank you.
Is that one previously approved?
No, that wasn't.
This is state bar.
Some did.
So we need a motion?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You want to go, Ken?
Yep.
Uh, last meeting, we talked about the, uh, leaving Region 11 and going into Region 15. Uh, Bill Rosman's actually here today, I wasn't sure if he was gonna make it or not. Um, most, if not all, the other counties in our region have opted to, uh, lead and go into Region 15 or Region 12 respectively. Also, it's sale of property owned by the region, and what the counties have all suggested, council for all suggested, as do I, is that we push the commission to adopt an escrow agreement so that the money's not put immediately into the depository of Region 12 or whatever, I'm sorry, Region 11, whatever expensive that they might use, but that instead that money go in to pay off the secured debt, uh, and then pay off legit creditors as they come to do. Um, I've talked to Bill about the comments that were made last time, and, you know, Bill wants to address them, you know, he certainly can. He told me that, you know, uh, he's never had a clawback on a federal grant, you know, that's, that's not happened, he's very confident that they're not gonna come back on, on any funds. Um, and at the end of the day, Region 11 is bleeding. I believe, uh, some of their old creditors have showed their head again. Um, I think hers may be, uh, back in the, in the red again as well, so, uh, Bill's urging the board to go ahead and, and get this, stop the bleeding, so to speak, and get the, uh, resolutions done to, to do that. And most of kind of all the other regions have, they don't wanna wait. I, I asked them about, you know, seeing, going, contacting the federal government, seeing, making sure they're okay with it and all that, but none of them, they all think that what's immediate, oh, it's imminent, needs to be immediate, so, um, if it's the board's prerogative, uh, that would, the effective, or intended effective deadline is to have this thing switched over to Region 15 by July 1st.
Mr. Ross, speak.
If, if you would like to, yeah, and if it's for prerogative, of course.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'm Bill Rosman, I'm State Coroner of Melvin Health Accessibility. Stephen Allen and I drove over today to try to answer any questions that you all might have on this matter. Uh, we understand at the last meeting, some questions came up regarding federal grants. I can tell you, I made inquiry with Region 11 on April 4th as to the balance of federal grants. I was advised that there were 6.2 million dollars, uh, balance. 3.2 million of that must be spent by September 30th, and then you have another CCBA C grant that renews and would be, uh, for $1 million per year for the next three years. Um, we're, we're continuing, uh, in our efforts, uh, with SAMSA to try to figure out what might happen with these grants. Um, my understanding is one issue is Region 11 is what is called a Certified Community Behavioral Health Center. Region 15 is not certified as such. Region 12, which are the, the region, the, the five counties surrounding counties, other five counties that we go in, they are not certified as such either. The likelihood of that grant transferring is probably not all that great. Uh, with regard to, my understanding, issue of callbacks was brought up last time. My understanding of callbacks is if money's not been improperly spent or misspent, you know, I, I've never, just, to our knowledge, money has not had to be paid back. I certainly can't make any guarantees or assurances, uh, with regard to federal grants. Uh, Region 11, uh, as we understand, is over $1 million in the red. Uh, as Mr. Schlover mentioned, uh, they were caught up on their payments to partners in February, uh, was then notified the player behind in March. There are five of the nine Region 11 counties that have already voted to go with new regions, and, uh, it is, it is our recommendation that Adams County join Region 15, uh, and Region 11 be dissolved. So, uh, let me try to answer any questions you might have.
How many counties have you, have been already switched over?
Five.
Five. And how many have 11?
Nine.
Nine? Five of the nine have already switched?
Yes, sir. To my knowledge, and everybody else, I believe, is taking up the issue today, being Adams, Clever, Jefferson, and Franklin, I believe, are dealing with that.
I think Clever actually has already done it.
Have they?
That's what Tom had said on Friday, they're, they're returning.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
So, Mr. President, you say it's nine counties and five switched over, and, and, I'm going by what I heard, he said five switched over and it's nine, and, and we got a county of three or four. We need a region of three or four. My thought was three.
Yeah, we'll be moving from four, Adams, Jefferson, Clever, and Wilkinson will be moving into Warren, and, and I, like I said, I, Wilkinson's done it already, Clever, and I got it on Friday, and I'm not sure about Jefferson, but also, they, they did not hit one delay either, no one expressed any meaning.
I think, uh, I think Jefferson had moved to Warren, too. I think when I talked to Ms. Rosman, I think she said.
I'm real confident of that.
Yeah, they had moved.
My understanding is they passed the escrow agreement, the pet venom, I'm informed by Ms. Langs that they have done that.
So, so, to your knowledge, you say you don't think that there have been no misspending of the money? To your knowledge?
To my knowledge, but we have not done a forensic audit, I don't, I, I can't give you any assurance that there has not been any misspending. I'm just saying, in terms of callbacks, uh, I mean, I can't make you any assurance whatsoever, but, uh, you know, whether, whether there's been money misspent, whether there are callbacks or not, uh, you know, remaining in Region 11 is not going to help that situation.
I, I'm, I'm the thing I'm saying is this, you know, I'm just one supervisor, but seem like when all this started, I don't know how it go, but seem like when all this started, the first thing should have happened was to find out was anybody misusing the money? Uh, and to the day, that's still haven't been done, so, but we just going to another region now, and whoever was over this region is not gonna be over Region 15. There's somebody else gonna be over there, right?
Bobby Barton is the executive director of Region 15. Yes, sir.
So what gonna happen to the person that was over this region?
Uh, I can't, I don't know that, I can't say that.
Well, I mean, seem like men don't leave us with no other choice as anybody else. Uh, this is what we wanted anyway, right?
Uh, we wanted financial solvency, absolutely, Ricky. And without loss of services.
You think we gonna get this with this?
I think that we're, yeah, that's fine. This is a much better decision than staying as a status quo.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say something. Uh, I, I know everybody on this board aware of this, but we have a serious mental health problem in Adams County. I don't know what they got in no other county, but I know we got it in Adams County, and we cannot arrest our way out of this. We got a lot of people in jail with mental health problems that need to be getting some help, still to be, still to be locked up behind bars. At what point are we gonna get to trying to get those individuals out of jail and get them some treatment where they can get some help?
So I think with your Region 12 that we're being proposed with, with both two, two fairly new judges, one brand new judge are working on, trying to encumber or bring on mental health issues to, to circumvent them from jail as well. They need a strong region to kind of work with as well. Um, they've been talking to us, asking what's happening, this, that, or the other. I think you're gonna see that, and with the plan that's proposed, the crisis stabilization unit, that's diversion, uh, from jails, we don't have to keep them in jail, let's keep them civilly committed outside of our jail. That's gonna remain open, uh, some of the fundings and being accrued from the state and stay right here in Adams County, so.
Mr. Supervisor, I want you to know that I've toured your jail, and I've seen some of the people you're talking about. Uh, I've met with Sheriff Patton, and, uh, since we first did tour the jail, uh, we came up with a plan, uh, involving crisis stabilization unit, that it be a single point of entry for Adams County, and when a person, uh, has a mental health crisis or they're waiting in civil commitment, uh, our proposal was that instead of, uh, the individual waiting in jail, that they be sent immediately to the crisis stabilization unit for assessment there, and if they're not too violent, and they could be held with the crisis stabilization unit, that they go to the crisis stabilization unit and not wait in jail. And that's, that would be the, the better practice there, and, uh, my understanding that is, uh, been, it's in the process of being implemented. If it's not been implemented, uh, CIT officers, uh, crisis intervention team, uh, of Adams County officers, and, uh, have been trained by Region 11 in the last several months pursuant to our recommendation to, uh, be able to better recognize people that are in need of, of mental health care or in crisis. So we would try to address that issue, and we believe for Region 15, uh, that issue will be better addressed.
One last question. I, I, I like the plan, but, uh, my, my own concern is, no disrespect to my officers, 'cause I think we got some of the best officers in the state, but once the officer, uh, evaluate this person or whatever he gonna do, then if he say he got a mental health issue, do he get a professional to come back and evaluate this person again? Uh, 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 how do they go? Because I can't speak for nobody else area, but in the area I live in, man, I got people walking around in the middle of the street, and I know they need some serious help.
Yes, Mr. Allen can probably better answer that question than me. Short answer is yes, but, but he can give you a more in-depth answer than I can.
Well, one of, one of the reasons that, that Region 15 was considered to be here, just to be honest with you, is they have the lowest commitment rate of any other region and state, so that tells us, when you wanna, when you wanna sort of gauge what type community services are in a particular county or area, you can look at the commitments. When you have a very, very low commitment rate, that tells you that somebody's out in the community, doing their job, and offering these folks services that you visibly recognize through call centers, that we can identify somebody that, before they are in a crisis, if they do have to go to a state hospital, offering those people outpatient services, which would be similar to a hospital on wheels, that they can come to the house, administer medications at the house, and keep that person stable and in the community, uh, to where they don't have to be accessing other areas. Jail was the only answer in, in Adams County, and, and you're right, it was terrible. I do believe things have improved over the last few months, and I, I believe they will be, um, much better through this transition.
And last, I'm just gonna say this, 'cause I, I, I just think when you mix drinking with drugs, with mental health, with guns, it's a disaster waiting to happen, and I'm seeing this, and, uh, my only concern is, is, is treating these people as an outpatient. I, I don't know how that's gonna help, and they can walk out of their house and think they getting some medication from somebody and getting some bad drugs, and they tricking some off that they should be in a stable area trying to get some treatment. It, well, we could better help them than.
And that's another advantage, uh, in Vicksburg as a, as a residential center for people with substance use issues. When those people are identified here, either voluntary or through civil commitment, they can get services there as well. If the need is great enough, uh, for Region 15 to, to, um, be able to support another program in this area, I'm sure they will do that, because they, that, that's the goal of community mental health centers, to identify needs and address them however, however they need to be. Uh, as far as being sick and, and, and on the street, that, that is an issue in a whole lot of places, um, but I can tell you, you drive through Warren, Hazard County, and, you know, it's, the commitments are down, uh, and the jail is not full, so.
And that's good news.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right.
If I may start follow up on, on, uh, one question you asked, uh, about misspent federal grants and not knowing that information. We have, uh, authority to, of course, review financial records from all community mental health centers in the state, and, uh, we have asked, I think we, we have a lot of information, financial information about Region 11 and other regions. However, I want you to know, and I think you already do know, that Region 11's financial records were not at all well-kept. Uh, there were a number of inquiries that we made, statewide, community mental health centers, that, uh, everybody, basically, everybody was able to answer except Region 11. Um, I, I don't think that we have the capability to, uh, we don't have the capability to know, uh, exactly whether grant funds have been misspent, but, um, I do, I do want you to know that, uh, there were a lot of issues with, uh, maintaining the financial records, and they were not able to provide us all the information that we did request.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
So we need a motion to approve resolution and, uh, escrow agreement?
Is that your, is your recommendation?
My recommendation?
What is that?
Is it my recommendation?
I move that we approve the resolution, with the what?
Escrow agreement.
Escrow agreement.
Sorry. It's been properly moved by supervisor Gray and properly seconded by supervisor Wilson?
Like I said, there's no guarantees in life, but it's our best move.
And there ain't a discussion.
I, I, I don't really have no discussion, but like you say, at the end of the day, at least we are doing something to try to uh, something is better than nothing, just put it like that. Thank you.
All right. If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of A. A. Any opposed, may have a sign of right. Motion carried, unanimous.
Um, I'm gonna pass this along with the board as well. Couple meetings ago, we had someone asking for a donation, and I thought after, you know, it's tough for the board to actually be able to donate, 'cause only limited grounds where we can actually give a donation. It might be good to have a form that if people, constituents come in asking for a donation, might have them fill out, and one of those things is to show that there's limited things that we can do with it, and they'd have to take out what you want in the proposed uh form. It actually has a spot, but they just, I don't profess to know everything, so if they know where it can come from, it'd be legit, and we wanna know that, too. But again, I'd ask any board action, 'cause it's, you know, like, you know, just dropping stuff on, but I was gonna pass it around, see if something might be interested in doing.
Well, Mr. President, I, I think it's something good, uh, 'cause if I go ask Supervisor Wilson for a hundred thousand dollars, he gonna ask me what I'm gonna do with how I'm spending it, and I'm gonna pay it back, so I think that's good. I think that's a good idea.
And what, I think it's a good idea, too, because we have people that come in here and ask for donations, and also we ask for your legal advice to go check this out and everything. So I was glad to see that form that you sent out, because I know some things that we shouldn't be there.
Right, we should keep it, and it helps the, helps educate the constituents as well, so we can add ourselves, 'cause again, we don't profess to know everything.
Well, the bottom line is, the money's not ours anyways. It's the taxpayers' money, and we don't have the right to just give it to anybody we wanna give it to. It's not our decision, boy, to do that. So, so I'm glad there's guidelines.
Mr. President, in, 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 in this, people think that county government can do the same thing city government can do. City got other funds, they got funds from the casino, they got all kind of funds that they can get money from, but county really don't have those kind of funds that we can uh just give the money away like that.
And likewise, there's sometimes we can do things that the city can't do.
Right.
It's confusing for them, so.
And this also, I have all appropriations out, because when we approve those appropriations every year, that form can have those appropriations, to determine what we can and cannot do.
All right. Any other?
I've got a couple items to be determined.
All right. Well, I got a.
I wouldn't ask them for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm gonna come up with, uh, my first thing, I'm gonna come up with a donation. Uh, you got to be a supporter. This is the Special Olympics that will be happening, uh, Kessler Air Force Base in Biloxi, that's May the twelfth through May the fourteenth, and you can be a platinum member, uh, thousand dollars, a gold member, five hundred, silver member, two hundred and fifty, uh, bronze member, uh, a hundred dollars. And this is uh sent to us by Ricky Warren, uh, Special Olympic Area Seven, Ricky Warren, and he got his phone number, Manda Wiseman, and Tommy John, so.
Do you know when it's due?
It is, the venue's gonna be happening, uh, May the twelfth through May the fourteenth before our next meeting, so.
You guys a sponsorship, is that?
Sponsorship.
I think they nailed those all, all of the counties, 'cause I received one myself.
Yeah.
I don't know, is that asking the county to participate? Have we done that before?
I don't recall us doing it.
We never did.
Have you ever asked before?
We called and asked.
I mean, we could, it'll be one of those things where we put it on for next year's budget, or if y'all wanted to try to pull it, you certainly can.
It's a special, it's a special event, so you may, you know, they got.
Can we do it?
You, you can do a sponsorship. Most sponsorships can fall under that advertising, the possibilities and resources of the county. Obviously, you're trying to show that we have, you know, acceptance of, you know, the many.
Where is the plaque?
Uh, you got platinum, a thousand, gold, five hundred, silver, two hundred and fifty, and bronze, a hundred dollars.
So what y'all wanna do?
I feel like we need to do some, a special one.
I mean, you always get programs, say appropriations requests for July first, or previous year, we'll put you on for just coming here, and something like that, if you wanted to.
That would probably be the safest thing to do.
And just say the same to do this. That's the President of the Board.
I'll let Ricky. Ricky Warren over there.
Uh, appropriation to put it there, okay? We'll deal with this. Uh, I, I got nothing on. Uh, Scott, do you need to be a big session if somebody, um, if you have an employee asking to receive a copy of that personal file?
I think I might cover that in the exec, the executive session.
You gonna cover that as executive session? All right. Executive session. All right, I have a copy, and I had to have the original. This is a request from, uh, the road department, which is against me over the.
Tire grant.
The tire grant, and uh, this is for a payment of twenty-nine hundred dollars and thirty, twenty-nine thirty-eight. Uh, I just need to request, uh, be able to sign it. Can I get a motion? This is a payment for.
Second.
For the tire grant.
You want the money?
Yeah.
We want that money. It's coming to us.
Yeah, it's coming to us.
It's coming to us, it's not a payment for most.
It's not a payment, it's coming to us. Properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Miller. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of A. Any opposed, may have a sign of right. I got the signature original. I have this for your copy. All right, now we back to this, we need approval for, this is what, um, Chance McCrake brought up, a three thousand dollar increase from, um, Kyle was for State Park, the interest of State Park.
The State Park, the interest of campground.
A campground.
Like sixty-eight square yards, a half, so they went up to four or six, the square yard.
That's that, um, change yard?
Yeah.
That's a change yard.
Yes, change yard for State Park. So can I get a motion?
Second.
Then properly moved by Supervisor Wilson and, um, properly seconded by Supervisor Gray. Would there be any discussion?
Yes, all that derives from the previous bids, and having got the price increment.
Yes, and the price is going up, and that was one thing that reflected that, you know, saying, I, it happens. Now, I just talked with Mr. Marlowe, and he said it's, that's the way it, you know.
That's the way it is?
No, it's just the way it is, it's just, that's what's happened. I mean, he talked to me, I, he, he's an attorney.
Well, President, we really don't usually deal with no change yards. When, when you bid, you need to get it right then, and some.
Is it, is it consistent with?
Some people bid low, and we'll change yard to you to death, but I don't think that's one of them things.
Yeah, no, no, I think that's one of them things.
I don't think it's one of them things.
I mean, we ain't nowhere closer.
The basis is.
It would be real low, so we still would be five or six of that.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
As far as price-wise, it should be, yeah, 'cause it went from sixty-seven to four, six square yards, so it went up a lot. You know what I'm saying, the yardage went up to cover who, what they had to do on the length of it, so the price is about right at two thousand, wherever, but, yes.
The cost per unit has gone up, or cost?
Yeah, cost for the asphalt's gone up. It went up for the unit prices, is what you're asking.
What we have to do is, they, that's the commercial reasonable basis of volume and price. Up for a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I mean is, I'm not getting on the unit, 'cause they're not there to.
President, could you, could you make sure we, uh, not out of order, man? What, what you saying?
I'm just asking how they came up with the pricing for asphalt, if the pricing per unit change, not the, the amount of units increased, but the unit pricing change, how do they come up with the unit price? And how, is it mercenary?
All right.
You, you had to have that per change. And usually, it's when you increasing units, the amount that you buy, you base it on the bid price that they originally gave. That's what we bid by.
So, so, President, can I ask you a question? All that good stuff you saying, what if, what if they didn't do what you just saying, then what gonna happen? Take my motion or not?
Well, they won't come after him, but come after.
Well, so, we need more details, is that what you're saying?
He getting the nut.
We're thinking of getting it right now.
No, but, so we're gonna hold that?
I'm sure it is, because the state.
But it, uh.
They may have four off their hands.
So talk to them, so you can get the regular bids over.
Hey Jim, how are ya?
Fine, thank you, guys.
Hey, I got you, I have a home speaker. What's the basis for the pricing of asphalt? How'd y'all come up with it?
For what?
The pricing of asphalt?
It's a new contract, right?
It changed.
It's based off of the original bid price, contract price?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Marlowe.
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought it was.
So we, um, being on?
Very definitely, or it's based off of that.
All right. Well, any more discussion?
Yeah.
Any more? All in favor vote by using sign of A. Any opposed, may have a sign of right. I got some minutes, I'll hold up for the executive session. All right, we got a, uh, announcement, um, May the fourth, there will be a, uh, National Day of Craft from twelve to one at the Bluff gazebo. In about, by one or ten, uh, National Day of Craft.
What time is?
It's gonna be from twelve to one at the gazebo. In case of writing, it'll be at the Grand Hotel. Uh, AGFC is, is hosting a public hearing and community action awareness that will be May the fifth from ten to two. The public hearings to discuss the twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three community service block grant, low-income home energy assistance, and community supplement food program, and how the funds were spent, and we invite the public to hope that, uh, it becomes self-sufficient. This is AGFC, uh, thanks in advance, Earl Dean Collins. So there will be, um, May the fifth, between ten and two P.M., so I guess it'll be AGFC here.
It has no location on there?
I'm looking for it, that's why I said AGFC don't have.
He was a great name.
No, 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 I'm wrong. It's the lowest gun community safe room. It will be at the safe room, and it will be from ten to two on May the fifth.
Can you give one of those to for that, so she can send them to our county?
Which ones?
AGFC.
The Day of Craft?
In Buffalo, yeah, in the Day of Craft.
Okay.
President.
Yes.
Oh, I just want to congratulate you, the, the director of AGFC, Ms. Zeta Thomas.
Okay.
I saw that somewhere.
All right, um, Monday, May the twenty-ninth, they will celebrate Memorial Day, uh, starting at eight A.M. Um, and for day, they'll meet at the Mount Zion Church, located at six oh one, McNooy Street. Um, they have to see to cross the bridge to the National Visitor Center, located at six forty, Canal Street. They're gonna take a thirty-minute break, and then they will leave the National Visitor Center and go to the National Cemetery. Shelters will be available, available for visitors. So that's gonna be our Memorial Day celebration.
Long get it to her, too. Long get it to her, too, for there.
The cheap blue.
Calendar, yeah.
Okay. So there we go. Everybody, this is, this is, uh, some for you, I think.
Oh, that's, that's that, uh, yes, that's the policy supervisor, where I myself, I did that in August. That's that.
What's the August?
Yeah. Commerce.
Who's on the call?
Yes.
So I need to get approval, 'cause.
Who, who else? Who else? Team of Congress to come, to Congress with me, Thomas.
Congressman Thompson, uh.
I didn't make a motion.
So Ricky Gray made a, Supervisor Gray made a motion to attend this conference in August?
Yes. Should be August, the, the dates on the box.
August eleventh.
Yeah.
August eleventh. Uh, it's been moved by Supervisor Hutchins, I mean, Supervisor Gray, seconded by Supervisor Hutchins.
What's the dates again?
August.
It should, it should start on the tenth. Discuss on the tenth.
August tenth, the eleventh, August tenth through the twelfth.
Through to thirteen.
It's the twelfth.
If y'all, if y'all don't, uh, remember what this is, this is the conference used to be held and talk about Congressmen, Bennett Thompson, and you get a chance to, uh, talk to a lot of Congress people at his, uh, policy deal, because he bring about twenty, twenty-five Congress people down from Washington, D.C., and you get a chance to talk one-on-one with those individuals.
All right.
That's a lot of things you can sign up right then with them. If they have some funding or whatever, it's up, you can go ahead and sign up right then with them.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor vote by using sign of A. Any opposed, may have a sign of right. Motion carried, unanimous. Tia, uh, this is, uh, bookkeeping department, uh, Ms. Tia Fells, uh, gonna, gonna request for travel at the NADCP conference in Houston, Texas. Tia Fells.
Yeah, juvenile.
Juvenile detention.
You got two or three of them?
I don't really got both of them. I got everything stuck together.
So we being reversed?
Oh.
It's the same thing, all of us go.
How many? How many?
One, this is the second one. So I see, June twenty-fifth through June thirtieth. Man's got a lot of information, I don't have one, man. I just wanna just, I'll just, y'all should put everything in. So, can I get a motion?
So.
In proper move, by Supervisor Gray, and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins for approval for travel for Ms. Fells to Houston to the conference, would there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of A. Any opposed, may have a sign of right. Motion carried, unanimous.
Mr. President, the H.R. Director was here. I did, in fact, approve your training, uh, but I asked, I asked Ms. Brenda to be here to ask for that particular dues and subscription, uh, but it's been approved, so, but she did show up, she just was.
It's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, um, thank you, sir. Uh, this is our travel, we had already approved this for the Colts. Yeah, this has been already approved. So trip to the Colts.
You gotta, they're purging signatures.
June, that's our, that's our conference, yeah. And.
Just need to sign it.
Yeah, and this, all has been traveled, uh, to the Nanco Conference with Ricky. Do that one first, and do that one before. Nanco Conference been approved. All right, uh, I know this one down in this, thank, uh, where the deal was in here before, uh, now we have, uh, Constable Randy Freeman, this is the conference on Colts, uh, the Constable Conference. I need a motion. A little travel for Randy Freeman.
I think we've been, we did a call. We went on, we did a call.
Yeah, it is, it's a paper. Yeah, a paper.
That's the paper.
So. All right. All right.
Hey, it's a B shot.
They show up. Yeah, we two up this way. Got to bring the version.
Sir? I'm trying to put my earpieces in, sir.
That's your, your reimbursement, you got some nice smaller writing there. I'm, I'm signing, I'm signing, I'm gonna make sure all of this. Make sure you print it a little bit.
Kinda hide whatever, whatever.
Right, oh, paper's small anyway, that's why your signature's small.
Yeah.
All right, we got, um, approval for hire, I do have a paperwork, this is Ms. Hollis Hunt, uh, effective date, the 3rd of this month, juvenile drug court case, man. Hour rate fifteen dollars, eighty-seven, thirty-three thousand, ten dollars a month. That's juvenile detention case, man, can I get a motion?
It's a year.
Oh, I didn't say.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, can I get a motion, Ms. Hollis?
Second.
Any discussion? If there be more no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign it, aye. Interposed, may it have same right. Okay. This is this one.
Okay.
All right. Uh, juvenile detention shift supervisor, Ms. Jerica Washington, uh, hourly rate, twelve dollars, fifty-seven cent, one-six thousand, hundred forty-five, uh, annual salary rate, and I do have a signature, can I get a motion? Second. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion? All in favor, vote by you to sign it, aye. Interposed, may it have same right. All right, juvenile detention officer, Ms. Jasmine Miller, twelve dollars an hour, twenty-four, nine sixty, year annually. Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign it, aye. Interposed, may it have same right. Uh, medical officer assistant, this is Henrietta, uh, Vasper, hour, hourly rate fifteen dollars, thirty-one thousand, uh, annual rate, paperwork had been signed, can I get a motion?
That's in the juvenile?
No, this is in the medical office assistant.
Okay.
Can I get a, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Gray, would there be any discussion? All in favor, vote by you to sign it, aye. Interposed, may it have same right. All right, we have a request for deputy clerk, uh, Sarah Johnson Carter, uh, Department is tax collector, um, fourteen dollars, hourly rate, thirty thousand, hundred and sixty annually, uh, can I get a motion?
So.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor, um, Gray.
Second it.
Second, by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get another discussion?
Yeah. Is that someone quit, is this a new hire, or he's replacing someone, is it, he's, he's replacing someone?
This is a long term, if, I talked to him a little bit upon on Friday, there's a long term replacement that he's doing now. Um, and it's within his budgetary constraints, because of the consultant that we had, it lasts a lot shorter than it would have been. On the up and coming budget, it's, would be an increase from, from last year's, from my calculations, it'll go from, you know, one-ten to about one-thirty-seven, one-forty. So, but I talked to Terrence about it, and I think there's some things we can do to increase revenues.
Is this a tax assessor or tax collector?
Tax collecting office. It is good than this year's budget.
I thought he had hired someone, where he gave raises with that funding, so now, is what's the whole cut?
He didn't exhaust all of it, it's still within the budget, so.
Okay.
And then, but upcoming, it'll be a little bit, but I probably have to figure out a way to increase the revenues, and I think there is ways that we can do it. Um, particularly, we're looking at doing GUBs, the tax, uh, per sales or whatever, kind of, for the horse. We're looking at being able to charge that back to the tax redeemers, as opposed to, uh, having, you know, us paying a fee per parcel, it would be charged there only if they get redeemed, and so, that's something that's going statewide as well. So I think that'll help increase some fees, and then there's some things we haven't looked at quite a while with, with Terrence, and so, I talked to him again, breaking right up.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, one discussion I have, and if it's something like this in the near future, tell the department here, come over here, because when we ask questions, we don't need him trying to ask questions from the department head. So if they wanna do something, they need to be here at the meeting.
All right, well, we request.
I asked him to show up.
We request that they would, uh, department head show up, we, somebody send a letter, uh, a email out to our department head, not just him, and ask him again, that if they're asking for, uh, any kind of increase or request, that the department head be at our meeting.
And they ask myself and Brandon the whole time, can we present this, I say, no. And.
And as a matter of fact, I would definitely say this before, at least one meeting a month, a department head should show up at our meeting anyway.
And that's the way it used to be.
They need, they need, they need to come.
Because.
Yeah, they need to come to our meeting anyway, just in case, in case we have any question. Okay, would there be any more discussion?
That's been always, uh, was supposed to be, because there are some questions that needs to be asked of some of the updates that they are doing, because we don't, we don't have no updates of certain things.
And I haven't told him, it's, it's a heck of a lot higher chances of getting what you asked for, if you show up and do it. Because I don't know, you know, they're gonna ask questions, and Brandon didn't answer them, they just defer, so it's, it makes common sense for them to do it.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, vote by you to sign it, aye. All right, interposed, may it have same right, motion carry and answer. All right, well, you know, I, I'll just make my report real short and sweet, um, I simply does go out, goes out to all the bereaved families that we have, and, um, you know, seem like death is raging on the land, but we have lost, uh, you know, some, some major officials that has been past officials that has, uh, a lot of impact on Adam's counter. So, you know, I simply go out to those family as well, and ask God to be with the Farrar family on the days of, uh, bearing, um, the previous sheriff, well, not the previous sheriff, the former sheriff, um, because I know he, he has had a long range, the Farrars have a long range of, of policing in our community, and they're well-known as long as, uh, with, um, Mayor Larry Bush Brown. And so, you know, um, we'll just ask God to, uh, be, continue to be with them and bless them through their time of bereavement. And, um, I would, I, I think that'll be pretty much all, and I, I think I got Adam to be, I got Adam to be determined also.
Okay, I want to say one thing, Tom.
Yes, you can.
Uh, the, uh, this, on the Special Olympics, uh, because of our budgetary constraints, you know, is why we're not gonna do that. But I'm gonna take care of, of this, um, myself. I have a son that has Down syndrome, for anybody that doesn't know it. He's, he turned thirty-six today, he's blowing me up, because I call him, I missed it, didn't miss it, and he's been blowing me up, saying LSU and go, go Tigers and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, anyway, he should be down there, but for some reason, my ex-wife just doesn't want to do it better. Uh, when I get control, better control of that, I'm gonna take care of it. But these kids are just amazing, um, I don't know how, a lot of people come in contact with it. Dana and I were having a bad day when it's called in Alabama, they introduced those ballistic walls, it was raining. We had to go forty miles out of the way to get a motel room, couldn't find a restaurant to eat at, and kept moving from one place to the other. We walked in a Waffle House of all places, and this little kid just starts waving at Dana, and he's so excited. His parents said he had never acted like that before, it was just, just one of those moments, you know? And, um, so she, he kept waving at her, and she keep going over there. So we bought their meal, and that family was the most appreciative family I've ever seen, and this kid is, we were having a terrible day, and, um, he lit our world up, so, so they're very important, and, and, you know, and this, this is very important. And I know, and I know Ricky and everybody listed, Mandy and Tommy Jones taught my son when he was going to South Natchez, and, uh, she is a wonderful lady, but, uh, so anyway, I just want to say that, thank you.
All right, I need a vote for.
Uh, I'm, 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 I guess I want to thank you for, uh, taking care of it, and hopefully, next time, we'll be able to take care of it.
All right. All right, can I get a motion for close, turn it up? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you to sign it, aye. Interposed, may it have same right, motion carry and answer.